It is now after seven o'clock in the regular meeting of the zoning board of Leeds and the town of Orleans's voluntary order. I, Michael P. Marneke, the chair, apologizes for seven minutes of tiredness. But with me tonight, and constituting our boardroom, are Jess McCarthy, regular members, William McCarthy, Matthew Cole, and associate members Bruce Cobb and Peter Javelin. First item of business would be to consider the minutes of the meeting of June 17th, 2015, that have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So is there any discussion on the motion? And all those in favor?
Right.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You have one hearing tonight. And that is the application of Donald Jan Kowalski for special permit set forth in general law of chapter 4E, section 6, under rolling zoning bylaw, section 64, 3C, 1B, to construct an attached garage addition to an existing nonconforming dwelling in violation of side yard setbacks. Property located at 65 Champlain Road, Orleans map number 13, lot over 47. Is there any member of the board who has any idea that the applicant or the applicant agents to constitute, to give rise to a conflict of interest or a situation which might be explored before proceeding? No positive response, therefore I declare that the members of the board, all whom will vote in connection with this application, are indifferent and qualified.
I need five votes, sir.
All right. Isn't that used to having six?
Very well, then. In consideration, all members will, under our practice, will be entitled to inquire and to discuss. I am requesting that Mr. Cobb, the opposing, but Mr. Javelin not, in this particular case. I'm also meant to mention that we're also, I have the presence with gratitude of our secretary Sandy Stewart, of course, the building commissioner of the town of Orleans, Brian Harris. Mr. Zander, are you prepared to proceed?
I am, Mr. Marneke. And thank you, Mr. Marneke. And thank you to all the members for hearing us tonight, as well as Sandy and Brian. Property at 65 Champlain Road. With me is Bob Burson of Leeds Architecture and Sandwich, who are the architects of the project and have presented to you the application. This is a property at 65 Champlain Road, which consists of two lots, as shown. And you should have in front of you a plot plan of land, which looks like this, which shows the existing and proposed locations of the structures. It shows the lot delineations, shows the setbacks. And also, you should have a submission dated June 29 by Leeds Architecture outlining the lot coverage, the existing and proposed lot coverage.
That interests the building inspector.
Oh, it's from the building, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, well, I can tell you what the coverages are. This is a proposal to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure on a nonconforming lot. Lots 25 and 26 combined are under 40,000 square feet of land, and therefore they don't meet the lot area requirement. The structure also is nonconforming with regard to the northerly sideline setback. The existing structure is 10.5 feet from the lot line and 10.4 feet at its northeast and northwest corners. Proposal is to build a garage structure that extends in an easterly direction along the northerly lot line, which will be not, which will run along the exact same sideline setback nonconformity that you have, but will be slightly farther away at 11.2 feet. This would be a project that you would be hearing under section 164, 3B, which, because it does not create a new nonconformity and does not exceed the height, would require a finding by you that the structure is not substantially more detrimental, and in accord with these standards set forth in your bylaw for special permits. You also have a series of elevations and floor plans for the project that I hope you've had a chance to review. I hope you've had a chance to go out and look at the site. Property is, do you have the photographs right there?
Let me do it.
Property is, it's a driveway that, and I'll just pass these to the board to circulate along. From the street view, there really is very little view of the structure. It, because of the nature of the wooded nature of the front parcel. And if you don't mind, Sandy, can I start with your end and just circulate these down? And maybe the other end, and then we'll add up in the file, hopefully. Do you want to look at these pictures before I submit them?
No.
Okay. Do you want to look at these before I tend them? These are photographs taken today by Mr. Burson, the view from the street.
So there's a setback issue here, also.
Do you want to copy the bottom?
Do you have a, you may not be able to answer. What is the distance of Champlain Road over lot 25 on lot 26 to the point of the proposed garage, which is near Champlain Road?
I can give you that calculation right now.
It's about 350. That's not 350, that's the whole thing.
Okay.
That's the whole thing.
It's approximately 206 feet. That's a very rough calculation, Mr. Marneke. What I did was I took half of the calculation of 350 feet, .61 is the depth of both lots put together. I divided that in half and then added the 31.06 feet to the lot line. So that's roughly, but it's roughly in the area of 200-plus feet.
The full length of that is, the way I read that, is 350 more feet from Champlain Road all the way to the back of lot 26.
Exactly. Back to the back of lot 26. So what I did was I took that number and I cut it in half, because I don't have the exact dimension of lot 25. So I divided that 350 in half and then added 31.06 feet, which is the distance from the new garage structure to the interior lot line. And that's essentially our presentation. I think the board has the elevations, has the plans, and I think the site plan is very clear in terms of the location. If you were out there, you saw that, you saw the existing location of the house. There's a small retaining wall around the house that isn't inside the lot line. There's one house to the southwest, essentially to the west, that has, that you can see when you stand in the upper corner and you look back, there's a pretty little house that has a view over this property out towards, out towards the waters, which will be impacted by the, by the structure in some way. And I'm sure counsel will address that issue. The only option would be to relocate the garage so that it exists 25 feet in from the northerly sideline setback. But, you know, given the location of the existing house and the fact that the existing house is already located about as far south as it can go, it would create a very unusual construction aspect, and I don't think it would solve, you know, the issue of, the impact of the view of the neighbor to the west. So this is, this is what I would consider a fairly typical special permit request, extending along the existing sideline to do the work. Lot coverage, just so the board has the lot coverage percentage. If you take the total building coverage as proposed, which is 2,763 square feet, and you divide it by the area of lot 26, the lot coverage percentage would be 14.6%. If you divided the total building coverage over both lots, lots 25 and lot 26, the building coverage would be 7.25%.
Well, I'm really figuring that 26 and 25 now are truly in assembly.
They are. That's, I've looked at the zoning code with regard to, with regard to, you know, the exempt lot status under your bylaw. You know, the structure used the front parcel as frontage for the purpose of constructing the residence. So I think it would be, the applicant would be hard pressed to claim that lot 25 is a, is a buildable lot. But, you know, I have not done an exhaustive zoning analysis to determine that that is or isn't the case. It's just, looking at it, it appears that way, so.
So we'll now entertain questions from the board. Mr. Cobb first.
Thank you. Do I understand this correctly, that there is a structure there that will be torn down, and then I get one nod and yes, and one shaking no?
Yes.
There is a structure there.
That wasn't the clearest thing from the application.
Okay. Well, it's a structure, what's there is staying, and they're just adding the garage out front.
Oh, all right.
The existing structure is remaining.
Okay, so there isn't a really a race in?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misstated. I thought the entire structure's coming down. No, Mr. Burson is correct.
No.
Yeah. So the crosshatch section is the, is the existing structure that's there.
But the existing structure is?
No, the garage, there is no existing garage.
What's a little confusing is that somewhere in here, it says there was a carport which was converted to a garage.
I can answer that. There was a special permit, I want to say 1995, and I, I have not, I could not find the plans that were referenced in the special permit. But history is telling me that there was a carport there, and they got the approval to put the garage in, which is this portion of the existing structure. That's the existing garage. The plan is to push that out and build another garage, and then a storage area.
So in the existing structure?
There is a garage.
There is a garage, and the existing structure is a three-bedroom?
Yes, sir.
And so somehow there'll be a conversion in the existing structure to reduce the three bedrooms to two, and make the third bedroom over the proposed garage? And there's no, where it says proposed garage, there is no structure currently.
Right, paved right there.
And could somebody tell me, last time we had an issue about anything over 2,500 feet? And this is over, remember that commercial garage was over, the reason it appeared before the board was because?
Well, that's because it was a commercial structure, it was a different, this is a residential structure.
This was a structural.
And so with the?
That's what happened.
Okay. Okay. That's it for me for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Javelin?
I'm good.
Mr. McCarthy?
Okay, is the garage, is there going to be a basement under the garage?
No, it'll be a slab on grade.
A slab on grade?
Yep.
And there's a little rectangle on the back that's proposed?
That, and my memo to the board of, I mean, to Brian's office, that has been taken off from consideration since these were submitted. Talking about the, on the back of the porch there, that's no longer on, being considered.
You're talking about the proposed stair relocation?
No, we're talking about on the, on the very back.
It says proposed addition, there's a little open square, it says proposed addition.
That's been removed from consideration, they're not going to do that.
Is there a question, were, were there meetings with neighbors or butters regarding?
I, myself, did not. My first day working with Leeds was to drop the plans off to Brian, so up until this was dropped off, I, I'm not aware of anything. I do know that they met with the conservation people next door, but as far as any of the other butters, I don't know. They, they don't live here. They haven't been to me here. They're planning on moving up, but they're, they're not residents right now.
You mean the applicants, the applicants, the Kowalskis?
Kowalskis, right.
Or representatives?
I didn't reach out to the neighbors as part of this, so.
Nothing in the, in the record or correspondence?
Well, let the record reflect that the file shows that notices were given to the appropriate individuals and entities under law, and that there's been no correspondence received either in favor of commenting on or in opposition to the application.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And if I may, Mr. McCarthy, I understand that at least two of the butters are represented here today that will be wanting to speak to the application, so.
No further questions? Mr. Cole, do you have any questions? Peter Javelin? Then I ask him whether there are any people present wishing to speak, and whether in favor of the application, or individuals wishing to speak, in opposition to the application. Yes, sir?
I'll step back and allow counsel to the table.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. This is Dwayne Landrick. And I represent Frederick and Lisa West, who came to my office in a panic in the middle of the last week. They are on a 50th wedding anniversary vacation, and they could not be present for this, tonight's meeting, though their heart is here. Because of the visual and somewhat technical nature of my presentation, I'm going to be handing in a series of what I've referred to as chalks, and I've labeled them A through, I believe, I. So bear with me to the extent I'm trying to speed up my presentation as much as possible. So I represent Frederick and Linda West, as I said, who live at 23 Harbor Road. There are butters to the Orleans Conservation property, which is to the west of the Kowalski property, and that OCT is to the east of the, of the west property. So it's, the OCT property is kind of the filling of the sandwich between the two lots. I am circulating what I marked as?
Mr. Landrick, that OCT is 61 Champlain?
Yes.
That's the sa, that's the filling in the sandwich?
Yeah. And I have chalk A, which just merely shows you the relationships between the two. North is roughly, and I'll just start with Mr. Cobb and pass these along. And the talk as I go along. Also, utilizing the GIS resources of the town, I likewise made a similar plan, which shows the two properties, and also shows the topography of that. And the point of that is really to show the relationship of the heights of the two structures. The base elevation at grade for the two structures is approximately equal. They're both high points. So that's as reference. Now, the West oppose this project because it will have a devastating impact upon their views. But aside from that impact, which only goes to one of the three-pronged attack I wish to make on this proposal, and I'll cover that view a little later as it comes up in the context of the bylaw. There are sound reasons why the special permit should not be granted. Before I discuss the defects in the proposal, I wish to disclose the efforts that I've made to uncover the property's history through the town records. The reason that I wanted to do that is I wanted to establish beyond per-adventure that this is truly a pre-existing nonconforming structure. It was a garage. It was approximately 10 feet away from the lot line. In 1971, the town passed a bylaw which said that accessory structures could be within their height from the sideline setback. I wanted to just run that to the ground. I think it's the burden of the applicant in the first instance to prove that something is truly pre-existing nonconforming. So history is a little shadowy, because the town has, does not have perfect records. The traceable history goes back to just 1988, when the property was owned by Ed and Linda Young, and I'm talking about the Kowalski property. They obtained a building permit in mid-'88 to put a new dormer on the existing structure. Their agents did provide a site plan for this work on other drawings for the project. In 1993, the successor owners, the Franks, applied for and were approved, as was noted. Well, actually, we didn't discuss the 1993, but the 1993 was to put an exterior staircase to serve a second-floor deck. Billion Inspector, then William Smith, granted the permit on July 9, 1993, and the file also contained a site and storage plan unstamped and undimensioned by Falco Engineering. In 1995, as was noted by Mr. Burson, there was an application for a building permit and the zoning board of appeals, which, there were two files to examine. The board of appeals granted relief to the owners to demolish what the application refers to as a carport, and to replace it with a two-bay garage with a second story above it, with a master bedroom on that second story, as well as an eating kitchen, a walk-in closet, and a bathroom. The building depart-
Can I interrupt you for a minute? I apologize. Could you just repeat the last thing you said?
I said that on the second story of that, the original carport, whatever it was, was a, was a single-story structure. In 1995, the, they came in and asked to basically demolish the carport and some other portion of the structure, it's unclear, and to replace it with a, what was the garage bay? Two, it's approximately 25 by 25, not perfect, but it was a two-bay garage, and on top of it was a master bedroom, an eating kitchen, a walk-in closet, and a bathroom. The building department file for that showed a demolition permit was applied for in late 1994 and granted on 13 January 1995 to demolish a garage and attach shed structure. Then according to the ZBA decision in case 1340, on March 1, the board of appeals granted a petition to construct the double-bay garage with a dwelling unit on top. The site plan filed showed the new structure as 10 feet from the sideline. The zoning bylaw required a dwelling at that point to be 25 feet from the lot line. There's no evidence in the zoning decision or the zoning file that any showing was made as to how this anomaly of a setback came into being. The inference from the zoning decision is that the former garage structure was pre-existing nonconforming. That is established as a dimension when it was lawful, and then the zoning bylaw changed, making, later making it unlawful. And I informed you that the town has this bylaw, and this is from, and I praise the town planner every time I use this, this is the compendium history of the zoning bylaw and indicates that 1971 bylaw coming into effect, and that's chalk C. So there's no evidence in the record of this matter that there existed, as of 1995, a truly nonconforming pre-existing dimension of 10 feet for the dwelling from the lot line. The evidence that exists cuts the other way. First, the subdivision plan was created in May 1925. And at the time the subdivision plan was, was created, there was an existing structure on lot 26. It is remarkably similar to the footprint that we have today. I'm going to hand it in. It also contains, I've got an enlargement, and it also contains, to tie down the date, the complete subdivision plan. You will note that there is a structure on the east side of the, of lot 26, which appears to be a garage, makes sense since the right-of-way on the east side of lot 25 was laid out to serve it if there were going to be two lots. Incidentally, my, my information was that the, these two lots were held in single ownership from the time that they basically came out of the subdivision, that they were, there was a, a mention in, in the application that somehow an additional lot area had been added since something happened. It's always been those two lots and whatever combination, so.
In common ownership?
In common ownership. There's also an outbuilding, too, if I remember correctly, directly behind the, on the, on the, what would be the, it was referred to as the north side, but the north and west Then for the 1988 project for the new dormer, which I mentioned before, the plot plan provided shows no encroachment on the property line. And this is 17 years after the accessory structure setback came into office. So this is the site plan uncovered from that 1988 project, and it shows the same configuration, okay, as the earlier subdivision plan. Now, I'll acknowledge, I freely acknowledge that things were a little slipperier in those days, and that, and that whoever did that plot plan, contractor more than likely, or could have just simply looked at the old subdivision plan and, and said, okay, fine, this is an appropriate configuration. Then, in the 1993 permit for the exterior stairs, the site and sewage plan in that file shows the first evidence of a garage at 10 feet from the western lot line. The plan is unstamped, and as I say, it's by Filco. So it's the third page of chalk F. So this configuration came into existence completely mysteriously. I can't trace it, I can't, can't put my finger on it, I don't, I don't know how it happened, there's no building permit evidence, there's really nothing.
If you look at that paper that's marked as chalk D, and then let me ship it to the rest of the board.
And then the 1995 expansion relies upon the same plan, the Falco plan, as a site plan. So as the application for today's permit stated, an existing carport was demolished in 1995. We don't know whether that carport was connected to the existing structure by a breezeway. We don't know when a building permit was granted for it. We don't even know if there was a building permit granted for it.
Doesn't it make reference to the garage as a special carport?
The, 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 the plan does.
Could you do it?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just quoting the application. Now, by inference, from the 1993 and 1995 plan, the existing carport encroached on the 25-foot setback line. Respectfully, applicant here hasn't met the burden of proof showing that there's a real pre-existing nonconforming structure that would qualify in 1995, or today, for the special relief that is allowable under the particular section of the zoning bylaw. The defects I submit to you are, there's no explanation as to what was built by way of a garage, when and how it was attached to the house. I submit that if it was a covered carport and a breezeway, that's not a pre-existing nonconforming residential structure. And if the garage was built after 1971, even with a permit, it was likely built with a permit as to its height distance for the setback under the accessory bylaw. So you're left with a muddle. Now, I'm not going to stand on that stool completely by itself. The, the point of a pre-existing nonconforming structure is you want to, you want to not penalize the owner for relying upon a particular dimension at a particular time. So I'm going to present this to you in the context of the fact that this owner, or as processed in title, already exploited the, the bylaw from nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming structures. And I'll go through that. The second basis for declining to grant the special permit is that the property owner is seeking to leverage the alleged nonconformity for a second time, and the numbers are pretty amazing. To get a sense of the increase, encroachment upon the sideline setback, I examined the 1995 file and the current application, and calculated as best that I could the total cubic feet added. According to the Falco site survey plan of 1992, there was an encroachment of 270 feet on, within the 25-foot setback on one story. Okay? So that was the existing nonconformity, if it, if it was truly a nonconformity. All the way to the other. Only the way or the other it was a nonconformity as to whether it was pre-existing, that's the issue. But assume that it was. It was two-hundred-and-seventy cubic square feet on one floor. With the nineteen ninety-five plan, the structure had added to it an addition of a three-hundred-and-ten-foot footprint for a total of six-hundred-and-twenty feet on two floors. The total encroachment is approximately nine-hundred feet, adding all those together, but six-hundred-and-twenty of it is new on the two stories. That's additional living space. With this plan, the current plan, the footprint of the new encroachment is five-hundred-and-fifty feet on one floor, and two floors, an additional encroachment of eleven-hundred-and-twenty feet. So that means that if approved, from the original two-hundred-and-seventy feet of encroachment, the total floor space increase is seventeen-hundred-and-forty feet of additional living space within the encroachment area. Now, look at it this way. The assessor's card, yes, sir?
Is the garage space excluded from that?
No, it is not. It's still volume.
Are you referring to wall space?
No, 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 I'm referring to footprint upon footprint. Usable space, including the garage's usable space, yeah. Usable space. It's a net space, what the assessor's record uses to determine what the size of a house is. I acknowledge that it's garage, but I will point out to you, Mr. McCarthy, that you really didn't get a very good description of what is going on here because what wasn't mentioned in the application was the fact that the previous garage space on the first floor is going to be converted to usable building space. So if you take a look at the floor plan for the project, it is completely changed. They completely redone the interior, and in effect, they moved out of the house. So it's an enlargement. They had an existing garage space, they'd basically taken the garage space, plus some more, and then converted the existing garage space that wasn't usable to usable, and then they're going to have a usable living space on the second story of their new structure. So, going on, the assessor's card says that currently the Kwalski's house is two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two feet. The applicant says he's adding eighteen-hundred feet in his application of living space. So the new house is going to have, say, four-thousand-one-hundred square feet of living space, including the garage space. Of that net floor area, seventeen-hundred-and-forty feet of it is new space. So that means that over forty-two percent of the net living space is within the twenty-five-foot setback on the north side. And just for your, I've got a chalk G which shows essentially it. Now, from a footprint of two-hundred-and-seventy square feet, the encroachment has grown to eleven-hundred-and-forty square feet, a fourfold increase. I submit that this is a creeping variance, and this result is in no way in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, because that's one of the criteria that you have to meet when you're granting a special permit, is it with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Forty percent of this structure, based upon two-hundred-and-seventy feet of some kind of garage, carport, and whatever, I would say that's leveraging it beyond, it's a perversion. Lastly, the final reason that this special permit should be not granted is, it will have a negative impact upon the neighborhood visual character in the sense that the view and vista of the Wests, subsection four of one sixty-four forty-four, C four, authorizes the board to evaluate these impacts in considering a special permit. Rather than belabor the proof, what I basically have done is first, to provide you a photograph which shows, it's a Google photograph, which shows the two structures, and shows in red where the new obstruction is to be. And if you look, you can see that there's a break between the sets of trees there. I'll pass it around so you can see it. Which this basic new structure just is kind of a thwart. So, a member of the board asked if there had been any meanings. The Kwalskis did confer with the Wests about this, and they agreed to disagree. So, now, what I finally have is, I asked the Wests to provide me with some photographic evidence that they could as to what the impact would be upon their view. What they have done is provided me photographs which give their estimate in a horizontal line as to where the sightline is going to be, but it's looking east toward the Nauset Harbor and then to the Atlantic Ocean. So this is the impact, that basically their view is going to be wiped out. The total of all of this, it seems to me, when combined together, takes this beyond the scope of the normal Goldhurst-type case where an owner can take advantage of the fact that they had a setback that violated the earlier... One, because there isn't any evidence that it's pre-existing non-conforming, to the extent that there is any evidence that goes the other way, it deals with a garage, not any part of a residential structure. Secondly, as I noted, this is the second time around, and I don't think the zoning bylaw was intended to allow you to have forty percent of your net living space within the setback area. And finally, as I say, pleading a special case, the Wests will lose a beautiful view. Acknowledge they don't have any right to it, but under the zoning bylaw, you're entitled to consider that. So, thank you, I was a little longer than I had hoped for, but I wanted to make my points on behalf of my client.
Mr. Tuck, starting with you, are there any questions of the objector to this?
Can I reserve?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff.
Just to reiterate real quickly, forty percent of the net living space within the setback is a variance that is not allowable or not appropriate. What would be appropriate?
Well, I think what's appropriate is what they have now as far as an encroachment into the setback area. I think an additional setback, I mean, it's like another bite at the apple. They've had their bite at the apple with regard to taking a pre-existing non-conforming structure and utilizing its sideline setback to gain greater utility to the property.
Capitalizing on it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I recall, the initial bite you assert is what's within the hatched area, that's also in-
You have my only copy, but yes, I think it is.
This is not the chalk, but essentially-
It's this, it's this with some additional, but this is the new area that they put on. The original basic house, if you look at the old plan that I showed you, was this part. Okay, great. And then they basically put this on, which had no impact upon whoever was viewing that, that was done well before my clients bought it, and now they're proposing to do this. Whatever was over there is shown on the site and sewage plan by Felco Engineering. That shows, and it's got to be a one-story structure because it says in that, the decision that, you know, it's allowing them to build a two-story structure.
Well, I guess that, question is that that portion that we just agreed upon, do we know that that was added pre-code?
No, there's a nineteen ninety-five decision that authorized it. My quibble with that decision is that the board didn't do its job in terms of finding out exactly what happened. I suspect it would have been easier in nineteen ninety-five to run to ground how this structure came to inhabit the setback line. You don't have any evidence of that, and it's got to be shown that it's lawful to start with.
So you're suggesting the decision in case thirteen forty related to that area we were just both looking at on-
Yes, it did. It allowed that, and it demolished some and built that new structure, and there were some other, I mean, the floor plans, which I have, if you go through them, you can kind of piece your way through, there were a lot of tinkers, but yes, essentially that's what happened.
As opposed to something in the location of a current-
They had, yeah, they had some kind of a structure to put a car in, it was referred to as a carport, on the plan, it's a garage. They lopped that off there and built this structure that was a two-bay garage, where it was a one-bay garage before, and put a second story on it. And that was about twenty-five, you know, five-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of floor.
And that nineteen ninety-five relief, in your view, precludes subsequent relief under special permit?
No, I think it's an equitable factor that the board needs to consider when an owner comes back in and says, "Well, look, I have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, I want to expand it by eighteen-hundred square feet, eleven-hundred of which is also encroaching." So, I mean, it's really a question of policy which the board has to grapple with.
But not surely-
They're not constrained, no, you're not constrained by it.
Okay, thank you.
Nor are you bound by it.
Understood.
Do you have a question?
What, this variance?
Yes, it's a special permit.
Okay, what's that for?
That was for that structure, and I think, I only have one copy, tear down, well, it authorized the tearing down of the garage, but before that decision was made, the garage had already been torn down. In November of nineteen ninety-four, the owners applied to tear down the garage and whatever supporting structure, and I mean, and so by, the permit was issued in January, and it was signed off on in January of ninety-five. So in effect, before the board even met, that structure was gone. And in some of the paperwork, it said, I think it said on the demolition permit, all these files are in the building inspector's hands, I looked through them, but it said, "Owner proceeds at his own risk with regard to being allowed to duplicate the existing structure." So that demolition took place before the relief was granted, and the relief was granted, and it's the only copy I have of the plan that applicant brought, but it shows the twenty-five-by-twenty-five-foot garage that they built in reliance upon that special permit, and then-
It was in the setbacks?
It was in the setbacks, yes.
And those no variance grant?
No, but it was, is exactly the same kind of case you're asking to adjudicate tonight. That is, the applicant says that it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and because it's a lawful pre-existing non-conforming structure, then under the standards, they're entitled to, if they make the showing, to get a special permit to extend that pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I argue, among other things, it's not equitable, and also that the board can consider views, and that when you have forty percent of the living area of a house in an encroachment zone, you've kind of subverted the intent of the bylaw.
Are you counting the garage as living space?
No, I'm counting it as volume. Yes, I am counting it as space, as total net area, yes, but the garage, the garage, as I say, it's five-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. So if you took the five-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, you still have thirty percent, I mean-
Okay, well, I just, yeah, I don't usually count the garage as living space, so that's what was-
Well, the only reason I count it in this circumstance is its volume, and I think it's a volumetric consideration, among other things.
In the sunset photos, forgive me, I don't remember what label that was, maybe I, where's the existing house?
The existing house is to the right of the trees, so it's not anywhere, it's not in, you know, it's to the right of those trees.
This portion of the house that we've just been talking about exhaustively, that cannot be seen, it's right here.
Yeah, it can't be seen. And I would note, too, that even if my clients are wildly off with regard to where they locate the ridge line of the new house, I mean, it's still going to obliterate the ocean and the harbor view that they have.
So it's out of frame?
It's out of frame.
And since the special permit was issued in ninety-five, has there been any appeal to the-
Oh, no, no, no one's really taken a look at this, Mr. Cole, you know, and it's protected at this point. I mean, that's gone to bed, that ninety-five matter.
Of course, the suburbs may not really want to review that nineteen ninety-five decision. Mr. DeWitt's board laid forth all these standards you needed under the zoning bylaw, even off practically as we have it here in two thousand and fifteen. You're not attacking that.
I can't attack it, it's gone to bed, but I'm saying-
You're suggesting that the spirit of that was violated from the very get-go by whatever happened on the ground?
Yes, because-
And there's no evidence that anybody ever objected or complained about what those-
Oh, no, not what-
...was doing.
Not what they did at that point in time, you know, I think it wasn't an issue. I'm not attacking that, I'm just saying, it's curious that we, particularly based upon the facts that I've laid out to you, with the various plans, nineteen eighty-eight site plan that doesn't show any encroachment at all, I mean, who knows? I don't know what happened. But what I'm saying is that when you look at it as a garage structure, okay, as a garage structure, not a piece of a residence, it's awfully suspicious that it's within ten foot of a sideline setback that was never violated, never even approached with the original structure in its enlargement. So that was just utility space.
Maybe so, but on the other hand, maybe it doesn't make any difference what the use of the structure was. The benchmark was laid and engraved in stone right then and there that the setback was X, and it's been that way ever since nineteen ninety-five up to now. Is that fair to say?
I respectfully disagree. I don't, I mean, put it this way, in nineteen ninety-five, what the board should have done is run to ground exactly how that pre-existing non-conforming structure came to be a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Simpler times, informal, they didn't do that. Look, until-
Well, if that were the case in all of our special permitting decisions, we'd have to lay the provenance of any previous uses.
Not uses, dimensions, Mr. Chairman, and believe it or not, this is something that I run to ground every time I bring something before you, because it's a critically important fact.
It's certainly something to consider, I grant you that, but I'm concerned with the integrity of the decision of the board in nineteen ninety-five and to some extent the integrity of our own decision.
You're not, you have plenty of bases upon which to deny this. One, the issue of the impact upon views and vistas, which you're asked to look at. Two, the fact that it had already been enlarged, and that, you know, that's beyond, that's really not in harmony with the intent and purpose of the bylaw to have someone kind of keep continuing to amend the house. So I think there's plenty of bases to find against them without placing yourselves at risk with regard to a potential appeal.
Very well.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I have, I'm respectful of anybody who serves the public, so I'm, and I knew all of those people with the zoning Board of Appeals personally, and, you know, I'm not criticizing their decision or their work. I'm just saying they've made it more difficult for us by not, you know, noting that factor, and I think it's fair for a board, if there's not an attack, for someone to say, "Well, it's pre-existing non-conforming, see, it's ten feet from the setback."
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Well, I don't know whether it's helpful or not, but-
Could you tell us who you are?
My name's Duane Richards, I live next door to this proposed house change.
What's the actual address?
I live at sixty-seven, this is number sixty-five Champlin. I've been involved with this house that I have since nineteen fifty- Now, I've been involved with this house that I have since 1952. There was always a garage within 10 feet of the lot line between the Toomey's house and the Connor's house. It was a small garage, ramshackle, but definitely a garage, enclosed, it was used every day for the car. And there was a breezeway from there to the kitchen. I think you'll find, if you tear that wall down on that garage that's there now, you'll find the remnants of the old wall to the old garage. If my memory serves, for some reason, they wanted to reserve, save some of the wall to testify to the fact that it was pre-existing. Whether it stayed that way towards the end of the project, I cannot swear to. But that wall did stay up for a long time during the building of the two-car garage in place of the one-car garage and the kitchen and bedroom and bathroom above it.
Mr. Richards, could you tell us what's happened to the property since Mr. Frank built that two-car garage? Has he done any, has there been any changes in that garage?
Since Mr. Frank?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, but what's going to happen with the two-car garage and the bedroom and kitchen above it is, well, the two-car garage especially, is that that's going to be living space, it's gonna be used, the garage is now going to be the additional two-car garage out front.
Okay.
But, no, there hasn't been any, the only thing that's been going on there is that they've gutted the house and taken down the deck and pulled out all the walls and ceilings and everything else, but, but that was, that was a pre-existing garage, there's no, there's no question. And I can, I can produce other people that'll testify to that if that's necessary, for whatever importance it might have, I don't know.
No, that's fine, Mr. Richards. Mr. Land, do you have a...
Mr. Chairman, just through you, I wanted to inquire of Mr. Richards if he, if he knows approximately when the garage went in, whether it was before 19...
It was there before 1952.
Okay.
But I can't tell you, it was not built the same time as the house. The main house goes back to the 1800s, I believe. Back to the 1800s. It was one of the oldest houses for six or eight houses around anyhow, maybe more.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, is these comments noted as in opposition, or...
No, I think that's...
I'm no troll on the thing, I, I don't, I don't really want, wanna be down as opposition and pro.
He was in aid of the board's decision. Mr. Land...
Just identification, that's all.
I heard Mr. Land requesting early proof of what was established, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Mr. Leonard to comment on that, but...
I don't think I need to.
Mr. Richards kinda was told us the provenance, if I use that word, of historicity of site.
Just for the record and light of references to appeals and things like that.
Well, I was mainly concerned, exactly, and what was on the ground, when. And I can't think of anyone more competent to do that, the fellow who lived on the other side since 1952.
I'd like to ask Mr. Richards to attend all of my zoning hearings, if you wouldn't mind.
Do you have any further?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Unless, I don't know if there's anyone else in the audience, I haven't been looking, so, no, I guess not.
No, look, I should, I should ask, is there anyone else present wishing to speak, either in opposition to the application or a comment on it in general? There's no response of, of, yes, Mr. Richards?
What is, what is the, is there a structure height limit that this approaches?
Well, well, yes, yes.
Is there a structure height limit?
Yeah, what is, what's the height of the structure?
What might that be?
30 feet.
Is this over 30 feet?
No, it's not.
Ah, ah. And how do you measure the structure, the structure height?
Pre-existing grade on the street side.
On the street side?
Then you measure up to the top of the ridge, that's the...
If, if I might, Mr. Chairman, to address Mr. Land's concerns. First of all, I, I don't think that I need to address the question of whether or not the structure was properly pre-existing non-conforming. I think Mr. Richards has established as a question of fact that this garage structure existed in that location, approximately 10 feet from that sideline, you know, since at least 1952. So I think the board can be comfortable in making a finding of fact that the, that the structure is pre-existing non-conforming. I think even if Mr. Richards had not testified today, I think the granting of the special permit for the reconstruction or the alteration on that sideline implicit in that was a finding that there was a pre-existing non-conforming structure, which entitled that zoning board to make that determination, but I don't think we need to go there. I think we have to go back to the standards for the granting of a special permit, because it's, I think it's pretty clear, and of all the information that you received from, from the Wests, I think the most telling was that photograph of the sunset. It's clear, I think it's fairly clear, although the perspective is really hard to determine here, and I think Mr. Cole's question was on point, meaning where is the structure? You know, it's unclear, looking at that photograph, whether this particular addition will in fact affect that sunset, because you can't not see, you cannot see the existing structure, and you have to remember that the garage is going out from the structure, it's not going along the back line. But putting that aside, when you work through the criteria for the granting of a special permit set forth in 16444C, I'll just work them very quickly. One, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. These two lots together, the lot coverage is approximately 7.4 feet, even at 4,100 square foot total floor area for the structure, it's still not an overly large structure for a lot approaching 40,000 square feet. Sortability of the site for the proposed use. The site is unremarkable, it's a building lot, it's a good-sized building lot in a residential district, it's, it's well-vegetated along the street side. The house, as Mr. Richards has testified, has been there since the 1800s. The site is certainly suitable for a single-family residential dwelling. Impact and traffic flow and safety. You know, you were out there, you saw the existing driveway off of Champlain Road. It's adequate for traffic in and out of the structure, the bedroom count will remain the same, it's still a single-family residential dwelling, so certainly, there will be no negligible impact on traffic flow or safety. Four, impact and neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. There's no question that this board needs to address views and vistas as a part of its granting of a special permit. But there's a difference between an impact and neighborhood visual character and whether or not it has an, has an impact on the individual or butter's view, okay? So the question is whether or not, when you take into account views and vistas, it will have an impact on the neighborhood visual character. Now, given the fact that this structure really will not be able to be seen in any measurable way from Champlain Road, and given the location of the structures in this neighborhood, this construction is not gonna have a significant impact on the neighborhood visual character. Yes, it may have an impact on a view of the Wests, but remembering that, you know, as we like to say, there's certain things we like to repeat over and over, there's no statutory right to a view. And, and this property is located and has a location that allows them to develop this property within reason. So the fact that this, this construction may have an impact on the view of one of butter does not necessarily mean that there's an impact on the neighborhood visual character. It's, it's what does the neighborhood look like to the public when you come to this neighborhood? And you have to understand that even were they to construct this in such a way that it met the setback requirements, if they were to construct this structure so that it extended down the middle of the lot and conformed to the 25-foot setback, it still is gonna occupy that same volumetric space on the lot that may have the effect of an, of an impact on, on the butter. So I don't think that there's been a finding that there's gonna be an impact on the neighborhood visual character. Adequacy of the method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, you know, those are addressed in other, in other regulatory issues. Acuity of utilities and other public services, it's a public road, it takes its utilities off of Champlain Road. Noise and litter, you know, obviously, there's some construction impact, you know, when you're, when you're building, there's gonna be some noise, but it's nothing, it won't change whether or not the special permit's granted. And the impact in groundwater quality and recharge volume and water quality, you know, the septic system has been designed to address those issues, and I think the lot doesn't have any unusual characteristics with regard to wetlands. So, I think, I think we're bringing this back into the same realm that you're comfortable dealing with. Does this addition along the sideline setback, close to what the existing sideline encroachment is, but not quite, along that same non-conformity, does it, is it substantially more detrimental of a neighborhood? And I think when you look at the total facts of this, given the way it's located, the way it's designed, and where it is, I think the board would be hard-pressed to find that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure that's there already, even though unfortunately, you know, there's an impact on, on the one of butter. And I have to say that, you know, Turner Leonard and I had a conversation before this, and he was gracious enough to let me know that he was coming in, and I asked, "Is there something we can do to try to ameliorate their concerns?" And his response was, "Not really." You know, this isn't, it's not like we've been able to find some alteration that would, that would, that would satisfy these particular butters, and so I, you know, and certainly if there were, we would certainly look at it. But we, we understand that there isn't. And so I'm hopeful that the board can find, as a matter of fact, that it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and that, given the standards in 16444, that we meet those standards and meet the, meet the requirement for the permit, so, thank you.
Mr. Leonard, is there any condition which would be, which the board could impose upon the granting of a special permit which would alleviate or remove the objection of your folks?
Well, the, I mean, I suppose, and it would require surgery, but I suppose if they could, if they could in some way enjoy, first of all, I need to point out to you that I provided an exhibit that shows beyond per-adventure. It's that Google photograph as to where the structure is located, oh, the Google photograph.
You know, they're all here.
The one with the red?
Yeah. The sun, what's east, you're right, yeah. And he's talking, probably, he's getting swear feet. It's like the engineer. Okay. Now, this is subtle, and I, so subtle, I need my glasses to... If you see this tree here, okay, and this tree here, and this space between the two, that is an exact match to these two structures, these two trees. And the reason that I, I know that is, one, the picture shows it, and secondly, there was discussions, and this, this was on a peaceable basis, between the Kowalskis and the Wests several years ago, discussing with the Orleans Conservation Trust, the possibility of taking down those trees in order to continue to be able to enjoy that view. And the discussion between the Kowalskis and the, and the Wests, where the Kowalskis asked the West to come over, the West came over and said, "No, it's totally unacceptable." And the Kowalskis said, "Well, you know, we're gonna go ahead and do it." So, the only condition that would satisfy us would be if, in some way, that structure were modified to preserve some portion of the view, which, you know, I would consider very neighborly. The other thing is, is that Mr. Zander spent a lot of time trying to prove things that were not challenging. And your level of comfort is not what, what we're really dealing with here. It's a powerful argument to me that so much of this is within the encroachment area. The bylaw, an applicant doesn't have a right to a special permit. The law is very clear that the board has the discretion to deny a special permit. It says, "If you meet these standards, the board may." And I don't hear anything that convinces me that the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw isn't being subverted by the rejiggering of this particular lot without any respect to that sideline. So, I mean, I, the, the argument relative to whether it's pre-existing non-conforming, I'll accept that up to a point. I don't think it's completely nailed down, because we don't know what the bylaw was at the time that structure was built. We do know that if it was in 1952, it was in existence, it probably predated the zoning bylaw, and therefore, is probably pre-existing non-conforming. But I don't think you're bound by the 1995 decision. As far as I'm concerned, as I say, that was the one bite at the apple, so.
I'd like to address, Mr. Martin, I, again, you know, there are certain sort of traditions on Cape Cod and the other Cape. One is repeatedly going to a zoning board to take a little bite out of the apple. It's, you know, all you have to do is take a drive down Route 6A through Brewster and Barnstable and Dennis to see how houses evolve. So, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for this board to have applications before you where you have one, two, three, and even more prior special permits, where people make additional changes. And I think each time it comes before the board, you have to look at the standard and look at the application and see whether or not it meets the standard. I don't think the fact that this is the second special permit on this property should have any weight at all for this board. I think you have to look at what's before you and determine whether or not you think it meets your standard, so.
Any further questions, curious customer comments?
I'm still confused, and I apologize for that. If you look at the plan here, which I've made a little schematic of in the back, so we have A, B, and C. Am I to understand that currently, what I'm referring to as B is the garage?
That's correct.
And that this is what was given the special permit previously?
That's correct.
And that this, which is being on this diagram referred to as C, is completely new addition?
That's correct.
And it is this that is the subject matter, if you will, of the hearing. There's nothing being taken down here, there's nothing pre-existing here. What reference there is to pre-existing is to what was permitted when the garage that I've referred to as B was built.
Well, to go one step further, that's the garage that was there back as far as 1952. It was reconstructed, according to Mr. Richards' testimony, there was a, there was a garage and a breezeway to the house. It was reconstructed as a connected two-car garage by permit in 1995.
And lastly, in one of the exhibits, perhaps it was D, in one of what's being referred to as chocks, there was a small structure off to the side closer to the driveway. Was that at any point a garage? You have a chock called D?
Chad, wasn't it?
That's a 1925 plan?
I think there was some reference.
Let's see what you got there, Paul.
Shed that was on the plan that we had had, and I think that was the shed, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the, yeah, the 1925 plan, Mr. Tab, is showing what I would have assumed was the shed, given it's...
It's at the end of the driveway.
Yes. Do you have...
There was a wellhouse.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
There was a wellhouse.
This structure right here, at the end of the driveway.
Which, which finally...
What I had is...
I've got too much of a vernacular here. Gave up the ghost. Excuse me. And it, when it gave up the ghost, the wellhouse moved back.
All right.
But yes, there was, there was a wellhouse.
But it was never a garage.
Yeah, you know what? There was a threshold there from something previously, maybe there was a garage way back when, because there was, there was a concrete, you know, sometimes you have an apron, a little narrow apron going into a garage door.
Mm-hmm.
There was an apron there, and it may still be there, I don't know, it's, it's well-hidden if it's still there now, but maybe there was a garage there prior to my knowledge.
Thank you.
But it hasn't been there, there has not been a structure there since the 50s, 52, or whatever. But you know, all but, not only, not only do they, but as I do and my neighbor further down at 69, we all have garages that are within three feet of the lot line or 10 feet or something else. It's gonna be interesting to see what we're gonna do in light of what you guys know, so. There's a lot of garages that were stuck up next to the lot line, apparently, somewhere in the 40s or something, 30s.
Mr. Kelsey, did you have a question or a comment?
Question, Mrs. Zander, within the neighborhood, as we would define it for this project, is there any visual character impacts, views or vistas, affecting any other properties within what we would define as the immediate neighborhood?
Are you asking whether this particular property affects any other views or vistas?
This...
This application? I don't, I don't believe that it does. And just for the record, just to, just to complete the record, I'd like to submit a copy of the assessor's field card for the Butter West, shows a picture of their house. Their house, just, you know, was built in 2005, relatively recently, and there's, and it, it looks like a fairly, fairly substantial structure, but the board can draw its own conclusions.
I see the two pictures that were referred to as the view and the Google map photo.
And I've been, I've been corrected, it was a sunrise, not a sunset, which I should've known, given the direction that the structure, it's east.
Thank you.
minutes.
Did you have another, if you have any further?
I have, so I have two questions, I think. One, I wonder if Mr. Harrison has anything that he'd like to add, or any views that you might share with us relative to the question before us.
I don't think so. I think the facts are pretty much fore, in front of you at this point. I don't know what I can add for you.
All right.
Unless you have something more to say.
No, 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 I just didn't want you lying in the weeds there if you had something.
They got in trouble.
So, at the risk of being somebody who tries to simplify so he can understand it, the bottom line is, we're being asked to, my view is, that the pre-existing non-conformity argument, and that there was one bite at the apple, I'm not familiar with that as being a standard.
It isn't.
Okay, so.
It isn't.
Okay, so.
I can make that kind of a ruling.
No, 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 I, so, so that's, though, though, a credible argument, that's not enough to carry the day in our considerations. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The articulation of it was a little bit, was a whole lot more complicated and prolix.
Well, it was, well, it was well-done.
It was.
It was well-done.
It was.
Okay, so, what we're left with is the decision as to this specific non-conforming structure, not, and it doesn't have to do, unless I'm not understanding it, with pre-existing non-conformity, but for the fact that there was something there that abridged the setback requirement previously. But that's not really our consideration. Our consideration is for this new structure, this new addition.
For the new structure, and it was being urged upon us, the way, I understand it at least, is that that further extension, that being less burdensome, or, it's being less than what had already been established in 1995, is, is acceptable within, and within our discretion if we find some or all of the other standards for the special permit, even though it's a brand-new structure.
Right, I don't see why it cuts either way. I don't see why the, the prior variance that was granted impacts our decision on this one. I don't see how that cuts either way.
Yes, it's the same, I think that the applicant is urging us that it was, the applicant, it was entitled already to the distance of 10.4 feet from the sideline, and therefore now may extend it further under.
The pre-existing granting.
Under the pre-existing, that's right, the pre-existing.
And, and, so does that have any more credibility than the, you're only allowed one bite at the apple?
That's for us to really argue about in deliberation.
As to whether a prior granting has an impact on a subsequent granting?
It doesn't, it doesn't, except for that dimension having been, we say.
That the dimension was breached once?
It was allowed to be, yes, it was allowed to, to occur.
And hence, the argument is being made?
And you could do, that, that, the argument is being made that this garage, this new, brand-new garage and boat storage.
There's no worse than what?
That could be extended 50 or 60 feet, otherwise, if it were as long as it didn't come closer, at 10.4 feet from the sideline, because that's the logical extension of this design.
The counterpoint to the, you can't have a second bite, is, we got this granted previously, ergo?
That's right, and in, in other words, when it was given before, the, was, may have, might have been a garage, it might not have been a garage, but it was a wall that was constructed, and now you're changing that whole concept by, by building a new structure.
Okay.
You see, that's why it's objectionable, these folks, two, two lots over.
So, I mean, my last question is, if we were, if we were, and for my purposes, I think we are, considering the sui generis, this is?
Yes.
Brand-new.
I think so.
This is brand-new. Does the volume argument about how much encroachment, other than the 10-foot, or the setback, does the volume argument have any?
What, into the kitchen?
Previous weight and considerations by this board?
I think this board has to determine the extent to which we should consider the volume. On the one hand, we're generally considering only a wall being a distance.
Mm-hmm.
Which is, which is, which is hardly three-dimensional. Mr. Landrath said, no, you gotta go much further, because what you, this is a build, this is a building, and whether you're using it for, partially for dwelling purposes, or putting vehicles in it, or boats, doesn't really make any difference. There's a huge volume with, when you factor in the height and the distance on the other side. The architectural plans are quite vivid and brilliantly drawn, I might add.
I felt the same. I would add that the conceptualization of it was aesthetically very pleasing.
Yes, that, that much many of us could agree. The fact is, it's a major addition.
It is a major addition.
Which was never in front of the board in 1995.
Right.
But it is now.
Right.
And the question is, what we think, how much relief ought to be given, or whether, given all of the, you know, the 14 factors, whether these Kowalski folks are entitled to relief.
And, and you're saying we can, we are considering not merely the setback distance, but the total volumetrics of the encroachment? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but.
No, not putting words in my mouth, I'm really need to see if I could plug it into one of the standards. Whether it's, in that respect, I suppose, generally, whether it's an entirety with the general intent and purpose of a zoning bylaw, and whether the site is adequate and suitable for the proposed use, given that the configuration, we think you may conclude, is the configuration of sighting of that addition, or any addition, is relatively limited by the shape of the lot, at least what's left of Lot 26. And if there's no alternatives, really, yes, sir?
I was wondering, especially later this conversation, what passed at the last town meeting, what was the intent of making this question a special permit question, whereas it used to be a, a, a variance question?
Mr. Richards, the, the answer is simple.
I'm sure.
There was a, there was a decision of the Supreme District Court, which kind of, which kind of put a gloss and a, and a, an explanation on what towns could do, therefore.
Could do, or should do?
Uh, just could do.
Could.
Orleans chose to do that a year and a half, two years ago, at town meeting.
As a, as a cookie to the inhabitants.
Yeah, so which took variance out of the picture?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And left it with special permit. So, so, so this board.
To give relief to homeowners?
And, well, under, under the terms of this bond zoning bylaw, we consider 16444 with its standards, and we have to find those. Some of those have been in existence for, for many years, because Mr. Dewitt's board had some of those factors, because you could see it in that decision, 1995. If we have no questions of, of any of the participants, then we can close, close the hearing and discuss this.
Can I take one final comment before you close? I'd like the board to remember one thing that you heard at the outset of the presentation by Mr. Landrath, which is that the Wests are not a butter to this property, and they are, they're removed by one parcel of land, which means that, you know, the reason why we have sideline setbacks is to, is to prevent encroachment and crowding of buildings upon buildings. So, you know, people, they don't get too close, you don't get that massing close to each other. This is not a question of, you know, if you move this garage another 14 feet or 15 feet inward, it's not gonna change in any way the visual aspect of this building from the West property from a, from a massing standpoint. The question for them really is the view. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not sideline, it's, it's the view. So, I'd like the board to remember, it's not a direct abutter, that it's removed by a parcel of land, and that the owner of that parcel of land, the Orleans Conservation Trust, has not appeared and objected to this particular application.
Last word, Mr. Landrath.
All right, as long as it'll shut Mr. Zender.
It will, I promised it.
What he says is partially true, but the other purpose of setbacks is aesthetics. And you have a whole lot of, of law on the books with regard to how you can do a subdivision today. And as I say, the, the will of the people who vote at town meeting is that there be a 25-foot setback, and that's been the law in this town for a long, long time. So, trying to do an ad hoc determination as to whether, because conservation land is directly next to this, there's no, you know, there's no violation, I, I don't think it carries any weight, but thank you.
Very well. Then, I will declare the hearing closed for the taking of evidence, and we may discuss our thinking. Mr. Javelin, maybe you want to speak on what your, what your sense is of whether this application ought to be granted or not?
Although I'm not voting, you're asking me if I wanna weigh in?
Yes, please.
Okay. I really felt inclined to agree with Mr. Landrath on pretty much most of what he said, and in granting this variance, if I were to vote on it, I would vote on it only with an amelioration.
Special permit?
Only if there was somehow an agreement or humiliation of, of the height. I really, he said 40% of the net living is encroachment within the setback, and I agree that that's appropriate. I agree that that's valid, whether there's a bed of rocks next door, or a neighbor, or Conservation Trust land. So, I would, I would decline this unless there was an agreement reached between the Wests and the Kowalskis as to what might be something more acceptable.
Very well. Beth, do you have, do you have anything you wanna say?
I guess I would feel differently if it wasn't conservation land next door, and there was somebody else that this was being built on top of. But it seems the trend in the neighborhood is to have garages three or four feet from the lot line, so that's sort of in keeping with what is there. It is less non-conforming, and I, compared to the rest of the view, and I wish something could be worked out, but that's not my call.
Mr. McCaffrey?
I think if we are to apply the criteria involved to the proposed application, that I think it meets those criteria to, to warrant a granting of special permit.
Very well. Mr. Todd?
You know, if there weren't an objection, I don't think this would be a no-brainer for us. And the nature of the objection really comes down only to this view question. I don't mean to minimize it, but it really, as I'm understanding it, that's, the other matters don't really carry the day, and regrettably, as I understand the statute, I don't think the view argument carries the day either, so I would be inclined to grant it as well.
Very well. Mr. Cole?
Any objections to the application?
Neither have I. We've explored this quite thoroughly and nicely. It occurs to me that there really isn't any abuse in the repositioning of the garage and the structure. I can see that the height was of, could have been X amount of feet as a matter of right. The only object, the only problem here is that the height is part of a structure which is as close as 11.2 feet to the sideline. There's no view easement, we still are taking that aspect into consideration, although the comment was extremely well-taken, mainly concerning the, the view in a, a much more generic sense of view from the frontage. And there is evidence that the closest point of that proposed structure is around 200 feet from Champlain Road, and is indeed pretty much invisible from the road. Therefore, I have a motion that following public deliberation by the Zoning Board of Appeals, a forum of qualified members being present and voting, and based on the application of Donald Kowalski and Janet Kowalski filed June 5, 2015, based also upon the plot plan prepared by Yankee, Rand Survey, Company Inc., dated June 2, 2015, and the construction drawings prepared by Leeds Architects Engineering, 15 drawings actually dated variously, January 13, 2015, and February 26, 2015, and the chalk submitted by the objectors, which are being made as part of the file.
A through I.
A through I, and the oral testimony of, in the butter, of Mr. Richards, aiding the board in determining how the actual usage of the property at 65 Champlain Road. On the ground, I move that the board adopt the following findings of fact. One, the subject property known as 65 Champlain Road, Orleans, is shown as parcel 47 on Orleans Map 13, and is in our district. Two, the present use of the property is a three-bedroom residential structure. Three, the proposed use of the property is a three-bedroom residential structure with an attached vehicle and boat garage storage structure. Four, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the established and future character of the neighborhood, and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Five, the alteration and construction will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Six, the site is adequate in terms of size and suitable for the proposed use. The two lots in the assemblage have an area of 38,090 square feet, nobody will up it. Seven, the proposed use will have no negative impact on traffic flow or safety. Eight, the proposed use will have no negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood. The front portion of the property on Champlain Road is landscaped and provides a visual screen. The height of the proposed new addition is less than the height of the existing dwelling. The nearest point of the proposed garage The nearest point of the proposed garage is approximately 200 feet from Champlain Road. Nine, the proposed use is isolated from and will have no impact on the method of sewage, disposal, source of water, drainage, or water resources. Ten, utilities and public services will be adequate for the proposed use. Eleven, noise and litter will not be increased after completion of construction of the proposed use. And twelve, there will be no adverse impact on groundwater quality and recharge volume and the water quality of coastal and fresh surface water bodies. concludes the motion.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And members of board, I have a motion that based on the findings of fact, I move that the board grant a special permit pursuant to Sections 164, 3C, 1B.
3C, 1B.
3C, 1B, Section 16443 and 16444 of the zoning bylaw to run with. Is there a second on the motion for the granting of a special permit?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Of those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
For helping with the board.
Thank you.
Is there any further business to come before the board? I would like to generously welcome Mr. Javelin back into our.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
It's good to have you back, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Tubbs' motion.